I literally was like, oh, look at that.
I did not say that. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Donna Stavigni, President of the Board of Education, and I'd like to welcome you to our work session on the five-year budget plan. I think I'll just hand it right over to Dr. Lockard.
Thank you, President Stavigni. Good afternoon, everybody. Today, we're going to talk about a draft of a five-year budget plan. I'll give a little bit of background. We'll dive into the agenda, give some of our thinking, but today, we really want to get feedback and get input from the board. Last year, at the end of the budget season, the county made some adjustments to their fiscal forecast for Carroll County Public Schools, which really, I think, put us in a good position in terms of a consistent fiscal forecast for us over the next several years that really allows us to think about the next several years, the strategic initiatives that we have in place through our strategic plan, of course, as well as employee compensation and all the things that go into our budget. And so, the county has a model of a budget plan. We talked at our joint meeting back in early September about starting to look at, work on, a draft five-year plan in time for our joint meeting in December where we would share a draft. So, it makes sense to me that we have some conversation here as a board, get some input, share that draft then in December. Ultimately, in January, I'll be bringing a proposed FY21 budget to you, and I'd like to incorporate as much of that thinking as I can. You know, we've been, certainly last year and all the work that we did, we identified some things that we wanted to work toward. Those needs and those priorities continue. We've been continuing with a lot of listening. This year, we've done some town halls focused on those budget priorities. We had a very well-attended budget town hall last week? Was it last week? Yes, at Westminster High School. So, we thank all those who attended and gave input. We have another one coming up in early December as well. So, our goal today is to share with you a draft and get your input and get your feedback, as well as get some feedback and input about some of those strategic initiatives that we've been talking about over the last, gosh, almost, you know, 18 months now. So, with that, what I'd like to do is sort of jump right in. You can see the agenda there. I just kind of went over everything that we're going to try to talk about today. And I'm going to ask Mr. Hartlove, who's with us, to start to walk through the draft plan with folks. So, Mr. Hartlove.
Good afternoon, board members. When we put this plan together, we looked at the county's current operating plan that they have been doing for quite a long period of time, and we modeled our plan based on theirs for consistency, because it seems to work well for them. And really, where our plan is starting is with an estimate of revenues over the course of the five years. So, the way you read this, so the first slide is revenues. The way you interpret this slide is the first column is the type of revenue, county, state, fund balance, other, and restricted. And then, the next column is our current budget. So, that's the actual budget. So, that $197,251,500 is the amount of revenue that we're receiving from the county, Carroll County Government, in the current fiscal year. And the next number down is the amount of non-restricted revenue that we're receiving from the state of Maryland in this fiscal year, and so on down. And if you go to the bottom, our total budget, including restricted, is $359,606,771. The rest of those years are planned years. And we basically, we use assumptions for how the revenue grows over the period, over the plan. And the easiest one was the county government, because this just matches what they have in their current plan. And they've included an annual increase of 3.126% annually for the entirety of the plan. So, those dollars match one-for-one with what's in the county's plan. The next row down is state non-restricted revenue. What we did here, once state non-restricted, is it's an estimate. It's based upon our enrollment projections, the implicit price deflator CPI, which last year ran at 2.54%, and then recent history. Last year, the non-restricted revenues from the state went up 3.95%.
And Chris, that was without any increase in student enrollment last year as well, right?
Correct, correct. And we do have preliminary, September 30th enrollment is up, for funding purposes, is up 140 students.
Right. We picked up about 250 couple of students. The way the state calculates that, when you take out pre-K and dual enrollment and a couple of other things, it translates to 150-ish additional students, which, just for information, that's the largest increase of students we've seen since 2006, as we've looked back at that number. So, that's encouraging as well.
Very, very, very good news. I think over that period, I think we had two years of growth, and both were very modest. I think we were talking about 20 or 30 students in that period from 2006 to last year. So, 150 students, you know, that's, we would consider that, 30, we would consider flat. When you get up to 150, that's more than a half a percent growth, which is real growth. In January, you'll be seeing the projections. Of course, I don't know how that's going to impact projections going forward, but I would think, this is the third year in a row that we've exceeded the projection, so I think it's going to have a positive impact on projections. I would say, each year, we keep, we're saying, we feel like we may be turning the corner, bottoming out, and it looks like that is happening. But we'll wait until January till we get the actual projections. But that is a good, that's really a good thing for Carroll County Public Schools. If you were to point, you know, we had several issues over the last decade, but probably the biggest issue we had, in addition to the recession, was the loss in enrollment. That really, it impacts the state formula significantly. So, if that trend is changing, that's good news from a funding perspective regarding the state formula.
Mr. Hartlove, this may be a premature question, because we'll probably see it in January with the enrollment projections, but that uptick, is that, do we know if that's due more to the change in birth rate, or more net migration, or maybe a little bit of both?
I think it's a little bit of both, but it's not my bailiwick. But I know it's at the elementary level, so it's definitely at the younger grades.
Okay. So, we've reached that tipping point where the graduating class, the incoming kindergarteners are larger than the graduating senior class?
So, yes.
Okay.
So, the state revenue at this point, you know, is based upon assumptions, and we're looking at a 3.7% increase, and that equates to about a $5 million increase. We'll talk about fund balance in a moment, just go through the other revenues. Other revenues are things such as use of facilities, in-kind revenue, we included in there. We didn't want to kind of put that in with the county revenue, because it would kind of cloud what they're actually giving us. P card and prescription drug rebates, sale of obsolete equipment, and interest revenue. Those are things that make up that other revenue row, and we have a modest increase of 2%.
I'm sorry. Did you also, at one point, indicate that maybe the athletic fees?
Athletic fees are actually also in there as well. You're correct. I actually had that in my notes, and I missed it.
Mr. Hartlove, could you say those again? So, it's the prescription drug?
It's many items, but it's use of facilities, in-kind revenue, P card and prescription drug rebates, sale of obsolete equipment, interest revenue, and the athletic fee.
Okay.
And several other miscellaneous types of revenue that come in, smaller. And then, restricted, and the restricted revenues are all the title dollars that we get from the federal government. There's also some state dollars for non-public placements, and some other smaller grants as well. They really don't impact this plan, because we grow the restricted expenditures at the exact same rate as the restricted revenue. And even if, we can't use those restricted dollars to fund utilities and salaries. They're for the purpose of the grant. So, if someone wants to get a complete view of our budget, that's why we're showing it, just so you see the entire budget there.
So, it doesn't matter what growth assumption you use, we would just match the expenditures to the revenue?
Exactly. If I put in 20%, which we're not going to get, but if I put in some, whatever percent I put in, I'm just going to raise the expenses by the exact same amount. So, it's not going to impact the bottom line.
Okay. That was one of the questions I had, though, was, you know, why are we assuming such a much smaller change for federal dollars versus?
We did look at some history, and it's been kind of up and down, but over time, it's been pretty flat, the federal dollars for us.
So, Mr. Hartlove, the 3.7% for the state non-restricted, there is, you said there's some benefit in that to the being up 150 students, but it looks like we're projecting that 3.7% to stay fixed all the way out. How comfortable are you with that?
Well, I think the enrollment projections will have a lot to do with that. I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable, because last year, we grew at 3.95%, and we had no, as the superintendent said, we had, actually, we were slightly down in enrollment. So, there are factors in there that we don't have, we really don't control many of the factors at all, but the per-student wealth, that's kind of a wild card. Inflation, if we go into high inflation times, that will help us. It would hurt us when actually paying expenses, but it will help funding the formula. Or if that inflation factor is lower, then we get less dollars. So, there's, anytime you do a plan, there's assumptions that you have to make, and, you know, you do your best. But I feel good about the 3.7% being a good representation of where we think revenues are going to go. And the last thing that I kind of, I passed over the first time through was the C-CPS fund balance. And if you look at that in this upcoming year, and the next two years after that, we've penciled in using a little over a million dollars in fund balance. And the reason for that is we have some critical needs that we'll talk about in a moment that we want to address right away. But we also, we have our, the board has a fund balance policy, DBDA, which basically says fund balance should be at a floor of 1% of the budget, which would be about $3.4 million, and up to 5% of the non-restricted budget, which is $16.8 million. So, right now, we looked at the audit that we just completed, and our unassigned fund balance stood at $15,994,630. So, we're in a good spot, but we're kind of hitting up close to the top of what we can have in fund balance. So, we've begun to think about some uses. Last month, we brought use of fund balance for some replacement vehicles. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder. We're talking about a few positions that we would like to fund short-term with these funds, just to start to utilize them. And even using a million dollars, that still keeps us on the upper end of what we want in fund balance. And remember, each year, we also add to that, because we can't have a negative balance at the end of the year. So, we always have to have zero or a positive number. So, we'll continue over the course of the plan to add dollars to the fund balance. So, the uses will, I think, can be more than absorbed comfortably within the fund balance that we have.
And Mr. Hartlove, can you remind me of the pattern that we've seen in how we've been adding to fund balance over the last couple of years? It's been a little over?
We're around in the 1%, maybe a little over 1%, which is three to four million dollars. We've been in that kind of additions each year, which, you know, on a $300 million budget, $3 million is certainly a lot of money, but on a $300 million-plus budget, it's 1% of the budget. And we have to, in all of our categories, we have to have positive balances. So, you know, that's our?
But it's been a positive, right?
Oh, definitely.
Because the fund balance is supposed to help you mitigate?
And you're talking about fund balance overall.
Right. So, I mean, the fund balance is meant to mitigate ups and downs, right? But we've been adding to fund balance every year.
No doubt. We've had some uses of fund balance, but they've been pretty limited the last few years, and we've been net adding dollars to fund balance. The last time, I think, we used fund balance in a significant way was for employee bonuses a few years back. So, we utilized fund balance for that. We've used it a few times over the years. We utilized it to procure this building as well. But our net additions have outweighed the dollars that we utilized from fund balance. So, it's been up.
And we've been managing the budgets each year along the way, such that we've ended up in a surplus position.
Exactly. Our goal is to be around in that 1% range. So, yes, I feel real comfortable with where we are, and I feel very comfortable with advocating for some uses at this point in time.
Is there any prediction in here for any Kerwin money? And if it is or isn't, will some of that be non-restricted, some of that be restricted? Will it be spread between the two, or where will that show?
Those are good questions. We, since Kerwin is just, at this point, just a report, and we really don't have any details of how it will end up legislatively, will turn out for us. It is not, the assumptions are not included in this plan. And also, from this first kind of phase that we had last year, the blueprint, most of the dollars were restricted. And we keep hearing about accountability. And accountability kind of equates to restricted, because what I think what the state government means by accountability is, they want to make sure that if they're giving us dollars, they're being used for the purpose that they want them to be used for. So, if they give us dollars for pre-K, they don't want us to then use those for something other than pre-K. So, they will restrict those dollars more than likely in that way. But the true answer to your question is, we don't know. We don't know how it's all going to play out. We're hopeful that the more, the less strings that are attached, the better it is for us, because it's local control, and we can make decisions that are best for the school system. But obviously, the dollars will help us the other way as well, it's just not quite as much. We love the flexibility.
For some of those?
Hopefully, I answered. Did I?
Yeah, yeah, that was good. And for some of those areas, like pre-K, where we did receive some funding, and we know that's on the radar for potential additional funding in the future, I know Mr. Anderson and his team have started to make plans for what that could look like, or possibly how that could play out.
So, in that specific example, what we anticipate, and I'll just use the figure of $160,000 as the number. What we're looking, what we do know is that the money is actually allocated based on the number of full-day programs that you have. And so, what the money is for is to enhance that and to grow that. So, what we would look to do is take those funds and then provide three half-day programs and make them full-day programs, so we can leverage more opportunity in the future for more funds. So, then, we can grow full-day pre-K programs at a faster rate based on that. So, that's our plan right now. We feel like we could take three half-day programs and make them full-day programs within the first year.
All right. So, that's kind of the start of the plan. That's our revenues. And I guess if you look at the bottom line, one last point on the revenues, you can see that we're growing approximately 3% to maybe 3.25% each year, which is good, healthy growth in our plan. So, next, we'll look at expenditures, but we'll start with assumptions, growth rate assumptions, which will drive the expenses that we show. I'll talk about general operating last, since it's basically, general operating is everything other than the items that we're going to, the other items that we're talking about. So, employee healthcare costs, we are assuming a 4.5% increase each year. This is based on recent history and projections for future growth. And we've had years where we've far exceeded that, but recently, we've actually had some pretty good experience, which it's been less than the 4.5%. So, 4.5% we feel is a reasonable estimate to put in there, but that can be quite a bit of a roller coaster ride, the employee healthcare costs. Retiree healthcare costs, they are, we have actuarial assumptions that are included regarding retiree health costs, and we also look at our recent history, and it's been about 4.5% as well for that. Student transportation costs?
I'm sorry, Chris, before we move off of the health costs, I'm looking at the, we have the information from the county?
Correct.
As well, and their assumptions. It looks like they have 6.25% for their employee health costs and 9% for retiree health costs. And is that just because the county's got?
They have different benefits.
Completely different experience than what's?
Yes, yes. So, it's really, you know, apples and oranges.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, let's see. So, that was retiree health costs. Next is student transportation costs. And student transportation costs are driven, it's a formula-driven expense. The formula covers fuel, maintenance, per-vehicle allotment, and driver and assistance pay. There's also a factor for administration. We looked at recent history and also projected going forward, and we're looking about a 2.5% annual increase there. Utilities, very good news, and it's been good news for quite a few years. We've been flat, or actually, even down for several years. We thought that that may be coming to an end, but we just brought to the board recently a 60-month bid for electricity that locked in those rates for the next five years. So, that's good news. We locked in natural gas rates for the next 36 months. So, we feel really good about the next three years, and, you know, we took that out all the way at zero, and that's been our experience recently as well.
I was really happy to see this, and it's completely consistent with what we've seen in the award of bids that have been coming in fairly repeatedly, right? That we're reviewing all these contracts as they come up, and we're able to get cost reductions in the months.
And savings, right?
Yep. So, then, that brings us back to general operating. And general operating is everything that's not included in one of the items below. The big items there are employee salaries, supplies, materials, hourly subs, non-public placements, those types of things. We've looked at kind of the recent history, and we're growing at about a 3% rate. And we would say that, I think that note is, footnote is very important, that salaries are determined through the negotiation process. So, this doesn't necessarily relate to what will be negotiated. So, those are our growth rate assumptions, and that ties right into our expenditure projection. So, that first line of ongoing operations is driven by the percentages that we just looked at. So, all we do is take our current expenses, grow them at those rates, and you get those ongoing operating dollars across the board. And then, you can see the percentage change, and it's similar to the revenues, but it's a little bit less, which is good, because that allows us for a little bit of dollars on the top that we can then plug into ongoing strategic initiatives and growth. And as you can see, the first year, it averages about $800,000 each year, the first year, because we're putting, we have the new use of fund balance in there, the $350,000 for fund balance, it's a little bit higher in the first year. And then, after that, it's 800, 800, and then it goes down to 500, because we're taking the use of fund balance out. So, it drops down to 500, and then back up to 800 in the last year. So, those dollars equate to about $4 million of dollars that are available to utilize over a five-year period to go towards strategic initiatives. And I think, kind of going to change gears here and talk about some of the items, and these are ones that you would be familiar with. These are ones that were in last year's budget. If we want to shift gears to?
Right. Maybe we'll, thank you, Chris, very much. Maybe we'll just stop there to check in, see if there's any questions or any follow-up.
Because that's the financial part of the plan.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to comment that it's great to see it laid out in this six-year plan or six-year format. And I know that that's something that the commissioners have been asking for, just as we're looking at our revenue and our expenditures, to look at it on a five-year, and here we have a six-year layout. So, it's great to see.
Health costs, yeah, right there. You know, the county has some other issues, you know, detention, staff, police. I guess we will be taking over some fire and EMS in the future, I don't know how many years down the road. And plus, all the roads, maintenance workers we have, it's a little different situation what we have, that we're dealing with healthcare and some of those areas. So, yeah, it would be higher than mostly teachers, but that's what explains some of the difference between them. But I like the idea, matching systems, that we're going to be able to forecast and go through, hopefully, negotiations and everything else in the future, that here's what we have, here's what, everything's coming in, it's laid out. It should make it much easier, I sure hope, anyway.
And what I would take out of this is that, because of the? And what I would take out of this is that because of the commissioners, you know, committing to that plan, which is very helpful to us, that allows us to then kind of map out where we think we'll be. And I think what comes out of this is that we, you know, this plan allows us to operate our school system and actually have some dollars left on the bottom line to address some strategic initiatives going forward. We'll need every penny of those dollars that we get, but it's a good plan that allows for us to start to do something that we haven't done for a number of years and that's to try to improve the system.
And I completely agree. And Dr. Dorsey, I think you hit it right on the head with, you know, actually being able to project this out six years and align it with the county, the fact that the commissioners were able to give us, you know, those growth projections that they're committing to on a level basis. The problem that we had previously was those numbers were all over the place for how they were allocated to the school system. And you can't really plan on that, right? But now that we've really levelized this, it can really help us with that five-year plan and give us an idea of, okay, so these are the dollars that we might have left over to address strategic plan initiatives that we, that we want to put forth over the next period of time. So it's great that the commissioners are committing to those numbers. And then if we end up getting anything additional from the state, then we know that we could use that additional funds towards additional strategic initiatives, right?
Right. I think it's, this helps to lay out the priorities over the next several years. And the next piece that we're going to do is just kind of talk about some of those priorities and what we believe to be important to us, you know, beyond compensation and those things that we've already declared is very important. We had a lot of robust conversation at the town hall meeting the other night. I've gotten a lot of feedback as well over the last, you know, year on this. So without any other questions, I think we can roll into that. You all have seen these before. This is nothing new here. I'm going to ask, can you have that in your packet? I'm going to ask Chris to move us forward. We have had some conversation around fund balance. And one of the things that I've had some individual conversations with are the need for some of the, I'll call them some of the community focus or some of the areas where, you know, there's been some community almost crisis, if you will, to address certain things. And we see this in our schools. This is directly related to pillar four, safe, healthy, modern learning environments. And we can talk a little bit about these. One of the things that I'd like for the board to consider, and I'm considering for a proposed, proposal to you, not necessarily as part of the proposed budget, I don't think it would need to be, but that, going, looking at that fund balance, what would be a good potential use that we could get some immediate, there's lots of things we could. And I want us to build some of the other items into an ongoing regular budget here. But when we look at security, when we look at substance abuse, when we look at health services, we have some pressing needs. And what I wanted to do is spend a couple minutes talking about some of these so not only you can hear what some of those needs are, but our community can hear that as well, some of the things that we wrestle with, some of the things I know the county wrestles with when it comes to these things. We've gotten great support and help in our school resource officer program. We have great support and help through our partnerships with the health department and other agencies. But we have limited resources to support our students and families and we see some needs here. And I think these might be good places for us to consider utilizing some of that fund balance to bridge us. And I'd rather get started sooner rather than later. So with that, I might ask for some staff members just to speak to a couple of these. Maybe we can start with the, we'll start at the top with the health services. Cindy?
So I don't think it's any secret that we have many students coming to us with more and more health needs and complex health needs. So in order to take care of them properly, we need our nurses trained and we need to be able to respond in emergency situations as well. And right now we have one person who is in charge of all of the nursing staff for our entire system. So she not only deals with making sure that we have nurses in our buildings every day, even when one is out sick, she's making sure that we're all covered, that everybody has the correct training that they need. And then dealing with all of the other just normal, everyday issues that happen in health rooms across our system. So we're looking for, to augment that program so that we have someone who can be training our nurses on a more regular basis and spending time with our nurses out in our schools.
And that translates right to our classrooms too. Because the health issues and the health mandates that we're responsible for are growing. And so that puts a lot on a classroom teacher and school-based folks. You know, you name it, there's a lot of things happening these days that require training, that require monitoring, that require updating, that require our sort of constant attention. And we want to make sure that we're providing those resources, not to just, and I'm sure you could talk to any of our nurses and they'll tell you how busy the health rooms are. But not only are they getting that support, but that that's filtering to our classrooms as well because ultimately our teachers are responsible for making a lot of those decisions about student health and wellbeing right in their own classroom as they see it in front of them.
Exactly. And anytime a new initiative rolls out that you hear about, that has impact on our classroom teachers and our nurses in our schools. For example, naloxone training to deal with the opioid crisis. That requires training for our teachers and our nurses. Another initiative that you've heard about lately is Stop the Bleed. We have Stop the Bleed kits in all of our schools and all of our staff has to be trained in how to use those in a crisis situation. So those are just two examples.
Can you tell me how many LPNs versus RNs we have in the system currently?
We only have three LPNs at this point.
Only three now, okay.
Yeah.
Three or four.
I think we have an RN at every school. The LPNs are just-
Yes.
There were some, and I don't, Dr. Dorsey, I couldn't tell you the name of the law now without looking it up again, but there was a change a couple of years ago. And so our supervisor of health services has been implementing that you do need to have a registered nurse responsible for each site and then an LPN can work with that person and assist. But for our sake, just efficiency of the FTE we have available, we've been transitioning for some years to RNs as positions are vacant.
John, do you want to talk a little bit about school security? And again, I will say that we have benefited tremendously from the county and the sheriff's support of our school resource officer program. Thank you so much. That is going as good as it could be. It really is. I'm very proud of our partnership there and the proactive and preventative, I think, you know, measures that it brings to our schools. However, as John will tell you, Dwayne Williams is responsible for all kinds of things under the umbrella of school security and the Safe to Learn Act. So, John, you want to talk about that a little bit?
And this isn't, this is on this slide as opposed to the prior one because this wasn't part of the strategic plan discussion, but this isn't really a new item for you. If you think back to the first year of the Safe to Learn Act, and you got that report every month for a full year at board meetings, the SRO program may be the most visible change, but that law had several other layers of requirements in terms of physical assessments of schools, various levels of training and more frequent training for staff throughout the school system. Also, the threat assessment team coordination, that's a lot of Mr. Streaker's folks, but that's also Mr. Williams who needs to be part of coordinating that new requirement. And so there were several other layers of requirements out of the law that either were new or involved more workload than in the past on certain things. The one I forgot to mention already is each school's security plan and how that has to be updated annually, embedded and sent to the state. And so Mr. Williams has to do all those things. We've canceled all of his future leave until you decide this question.
How do you feel about that, Mr. Williams?
Oh, he's here. I didn't know he was here. I have to change what I was going to say now. So there's all those new requirements, but he was working full-time anyway. The number of threats that, you know, and so far, most of those aren't real and none of them have been serious, but they have to be addressed day and night, even though it's not a local change as part of the new law, but the state has done a lot with the Center for School Safety to set up reporting tools and monitoring tools and tip lines. So he has to be on call around the clock to do that, in addition to the other things we would hope he would do. Coordinate the program, maintain, monitor, evaluate, update and build plans for all the physical equipment we've put in our schools over the last several years that you've funded, that the commissioners have helped fund and the state has helped fund. And so we're looking to meet all of those needs, be more responsive to the schools when they need him. Because even though I was making a joke, it's tough when he's out because concerns don't stop happening on those days. And Chris is his designated deputy to show up if Dwayne's not in. And so this would build, this would double the office. This would double the office and build in some redundancy and some backup and hopefully help us meet those needs, but be a little more strategic going forward as well in terms of planning and aligning resources. And the position we're talking about is not really new to your conversation because I wanted to end with, if you think back to when the law first passed and the state grant was part of it, this was also a position we were going to ask the state to fund in the first year. And they essentially said, you're looking at requesting two positions. The other was the required mental health coordinator. Realistically, we're not going to fund them both, so pick the one that's of the highest need to you or make a priority. And so we went in that route. But this is essentially that position we're bringing back in this format.
Well, John, we also approved consulting dollars, right? And is that, is that the same? So what the consulting dollars would have been spent for, is this really for, what would be done as a coordinator of school security?
Yeah. I think, in some cases, yes. Some of the money was for other types of things, but this person would be there with Dwayne to do the training, to do the physical assessments. Those were two of the things that the grant money went to. And that's a good use of the grant money. And I think the services we were able to get with the grant money were great. This is a commentary on the quality of those services. But there's a difference between someone being on staff to do the training and then follow up on the training in terms of looking at how you do your drills, looking at your security plan, then just having people come in to do the training we're paying them for, but then they're not available afterwards. So yeah, that's a good tie-in. And the grant money wouldn't be wasted as long as it continues. There's plenty of other needs as Ms. Bataglia and Ms. Herbert could tell you from being on the Security Advisory Council, there's enough stuff to then focus that grant money on in future grant requests.
Okay. But having this position would actually free up some of those grant dollars to use in a different way.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be helpful. Okay.
Absolutely.
Just a question. SRO's been in school the second year. Is there any statistics to back up the benefit of them? I've heard a lot of things they've done from kids, principals and the SROs, but do we have any hard facts on anything that, yes, these guys have prevented or helped with anything?
Right. I would say anecdotally, sure, I could give you examples and stories and there are even a few that were publicized about the SRO's involvement and proactivity at the school. I don't have any data in the year and change that we've had. I know we've done a lot of debriefing with the sheriff and the resource officers, talking about process improvement, where we can get better. But in terms of a statistic comparing one year to the next, I think it'd be a little too early. I don't know, Dwayne, if, or John, if nationally, there's-
There are, depending on what you're asking for, Commissioner Weaver, there are a couple of state reports that we're required to do and those include number of reportable offenses, police contact on school property. And in most cases now that would involve an SRO since the program's been instituted. And I don't know if it's part of that report or separately, but we do have to report SRO contact with students. And so there's, there are data that exist. I want to be careful because I do remember that last year the General Assembly exempted some of those reports from public disclosure, I think for obvious reasons. But it doesn't mean we couldn't convey that information to you through the sheriff. And I don't know, you know, that's not necessarily, those aren't necessarily data where you could say the, I think what you could take from those reports, the data in those reports is before we had SROs, principals or school-based administrators or central office people showing up to help were handling those situations firsthand and or calling the police and waiting, you know, not necessarily waiting long, but the sheriff's office had to respond with the SROs in place. They're there to respond to those, not to disciplinary, not to building-level things, but to those instances that require police presence, they're right there on the spot. So certainly response time.
It's very hard to document any of this, especially in that area. I was just wondering if it had anything that could reinforce the value of them, but, you know, decrease in suspensions or anything, anything has taken impact. I don't, probably too premature, as you said.
It is at this point.
Five years to-
But like I said, anecdotally, I can tell you, and you can talk to any of our principals and they will tell you, as well as our community members who have, SROs have been very well-received in our communities. They've built relationships with our school communities and it's paying off. I don't have a data set to show you that at this point, but I know anecdotally through my travels to different schools and throughout the county, that's what I repeatedly hear.
I hear the same thing, so that's good.
Okay. And then last, the teacher specialist role that we're looking at using fund balance for substance abuse prevention.
Yeah, sure. So I just want to make it clear, this would be a teacher. This would be someone that would be out working in the schools on a regular basis. Not that the other positions wouldn't, but this would be something that would be true boots on the ground, supporting our teachers with new standards and content that's being available by the state. At our recent joint meeting with the commissioners, we heard loud and clear all of the efforts and initiatives we have in place. Chris Tobias did a great job of illustrating that, a long list of everything that's taking place. But the reality is with that comes that only two folks are doing it right now. It's Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Tobias. And as we all know also that we are getting updates on a regular basis from the state as it relates to content that needs to be available to our teachers to be sharing with students. This position would be someone that is working directly between the content office as well as the school. This person would be supporting lessons and again, being a conduit not only to the school, but also to our partnerships. So Dr. Lockard said this would be a pillar four support, but this would also be a pillar two support. We know the crisis and I'm not just speaking of narcotics, I'm speaking of vaping, I'm still speaking of alcohol. And so what this would be is a proactive measure at a scale that we feel would provide the flexibility and someone that has the ability to get around to different teachers and to support them with the lessons and the content to get the information across to our students, to be more proactive. We feel like it's, the return on investment would be huge in this particular situation. And we also finally felt like this position, as we're working on the Wellness Council and really looking at our policy and regulations there, this person would support our administration in each school because as we know wellness is something that we want to continue to bring up front and put back up on the front burner and make sure that our schools are considering that when we're talking about educating the whole child. So this person would be, would have a huge job in front of them, but there would be additional support, necessary support to Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Tobias.
Mr. Anderson, I want to say that this, this position, I really take a whole lot of interest in, to make sure that we do get. I envision, and this is just in my world, of how we can help combat a lot of the issues we're having with our students and the opioid epidemic, is that this person, when the health department sends out an overdose alert, that this person can find out exactly around what school areas that this could potentially be around and connect with that administration immediately and be like, hey, can you notify your community that this is kind of happening around there?
Absolutely. And as we know, we get that information from Mr. Singer where we know that there's anywhere between, I think it's 500 to 600 overdoses this year locally, that this person can then target a community district and maybe work with those schools. Very similar to what we're trying to do in January, bringing our community together to provide a variety of topics that can be discussed, bringing in our partners that we've made relationships with, where they can, we can connect parents with it and they don't feel like, that they're embarrassed, that their child may need help.
Right. And I think that's something we're really, really more of an individual community impact. I mean, like I said, when, you know, when I get the, hey, there's been six overdoses today in Carroll County, I mean, it'd be nice for that teacher to contact that administration in that area and be like, hey, just kind of like let that community know what's going on. know what's going on. And I think it's, it's so important that we try to make sure that we are getting these areas immediately.
Yeah, and we do have a great relationship with the health department, and we're often providing them information that they need to continue to do the work, and this person would be a great, you know, individual that we can assign to them, if you will.
Definitely.
The other two pieces there, so those, I wanted to make sure we just sort of publicly had the opportunity to sort of vet that, talk about it. I appreciate you all sharing that information and the questions. The other two, we already talked a little bit about pre-K program expansion, much of that is contingent upon what happens, the legislature and Kerwin. The other you've heard us talk about is virtual learning. We are developing, you know, virtual learning opportunities for students. I would ask that either Cindy or Jason share just a little bit about that, but we, and why we have sort of a to-be-determined. We want to make sure it's on folks' radar, but we'll make sure we included that.
So we definitely are working on creating a more robust virtual learning program for our students. And our two top priorities right now are credit recovery and then providing equity for students all across the system in course offerings, so that if a course that's offered at one school isn't offered at another school, that a student would be able to take it online. So that equity issue is in the forefront. And as far as the to-be-determined, we're looking at the different vendors that we're going through to be able to offer course content. And then the other expenditure would be for staff, to make sure that we have appropriate staff overseeing and dealing with all aspects of the program.
So I have a question. Is there a way to potentially pilot like one foreign language class, like for example, sign language? We could pilot that at Francis Scott Key and Mann Valley next year, potentially, where that way we just kind of see how it works, just one class to start, and then we could go from there a little bit more, but just kind of...
Right, yes, right now, we're in the process, we're meeting regularly to determine what is going to be rolled out for next year. And so that's one of the ways we're looking at doing it.
Because I just, I look at those two schools as Francis Scott Key and then Mann Valley as the two schools that don't have a lot of the equitable courses available. And I think that's where we need to start, if we're going to start on the high school level, is let's start with those two high schools, and then we can kind of go from there a little bit more.
Yep.
So we are planning to roll out a pilot program, starting with the next school year. We just don't know exactly what the scope of that pilot program is.
Right, we're still determining cost.
Still in development, and we'd love to be able to bring some information to the board at some point here, in the next few months.
And just to give a little feedback behind those three positions, and so those tie to the 300-some thousand per year that we're talking about out of the fund balance, right? And I guess I'm always leery of using fund balance to fund ongoing expenses, but I think in this situation, if we can outline these as, this is a pilot program with these three positions, we're going to say, these are the strategic plan measures that we're specifically targeting. And if we, if we achieve that, then we'd say, okay, now this is something that's no longer a pilot, and we'll extend that, and we would use those as part of ongoing dollars. But if we don't achieve what we're trying to achieve with the strategic plan, then we say, okay, these positions are no longer funded, we need to try something different. I would be very willing to support these out of fund balance dollars if we viewed it as in sort of that pilot perspective.
And from a funding perspective, we did include them being absorbed into ongoing operating in the out-years of the plan. But if the pilot was not successful, we could certainly use that, those FTE for something else. So it's, but we didn't, we didn't kind of cut off funding and say, okay, after these years, it's, we don't have an answer. It is absorbed into the plan after the fund balance is used.
Right. I think that would be the way I'd want to go in terms of, I referenced pillar four, you referenced another. We would, we would, we've already made those connections with our strategic plan, we'd want to build in some of the outcomes then, the accountability measures, we've already been thinking about, but bring those to you as well, and say, here's specifically what we'd like to achieve. And a lot of that is, you know, it's been outlined in the work that we've done, we just feel like we need the support and the help to realize that. And all of these, again, are things that are impacting kids or community or families at the, at the school level. And that's where we keep our focus, so.
And I'd also be interested, I know that at one point in time, we had talked about specialists, and I know that we're, you know, reading in math specialists in the elementary and middle schools, but we've kind of pushed those out a little further. I would definitely be interested in kind of thinking about it in this fashion for, you know, our pillar one results, right? Like if we know that we're falling short of where we want to be for elementary school ELA, right? Like is there a very targeted way to put a resource in here that we could use out of fund balance to say, okay, for a short-term burst of focus, right, on those specific academic achievement measures, is there some way that we could incorporate that in? Like I'd certainly be interested in seeing something like that. I don't know how other board members might feel about that.
Well, I mean, currently, we have those positions here for considering inclusion into the budget.
If you go to the next, the next... So we can, I think we talked about the impact, Chris did a nice job with that and virtual learning. The one last piece before we get to some of those is, as we do grow number of students, we do have to factor in positions tied to enrollment growth. You'll hear a class size report from Cindy this evening, as we gain more students, ultimately we'll have to reflect that in our student-teacher ratio. Chris, do you want to add anything else to that?
No, I mean, that's something that we've done over the years, we adjust the staffing to enrollment, and we try to stay in a range that we've been in over the last 10 to 15 years. We try to stay within that range. So we'll continue to do that, and that, we will use the projections to kind of dictate that, but ultimately, we'll do it, in the year that it happens, we'll add the number of teachers or, or if we were to go down, we'll back out the number of teachers to keep us in a certain ratio.
So, Chris, go ahead to that next slide. So here, Dr. Dorsey, is what you were, well, we're going to get to your input here. These are all the things that we've been talking about so far, and then to your point, Donna, prioritizing those, thinking about that return on investment, how we'd best utilize. I guess this is where I'd like to, many of you have been to the town halls, you've been, obviously, you're in our schools and visiting and talking to folks as we are. What are those priorities for you? I want to get your input. Are there other things to consider as we sort of head into December and then January for proposed budget and, you know, moving into this process for next year? So maybe I'll stop there and look to you all for conversation.
All right, I'm ready. I know. At our last town hall, we definitely did come up with definitely a need for special education teachers. And I have been calling out to you all that we all need help in that area. If anyone goes into any elementary education area and you go to the special ed department, those teachers have to make that decision. Am I going to teach, or am I going to fill out my federal forms today? And it is to the point where they are taking their everything home. They are taking their work plans home, they are taking the forms home, and then they get to school, and then they have other problems there. And you, they cannot divvy up the time that they need to be teaching, because they're out trying to make phone calls, they're going to meetings, they're out of their classes. And I really feel that we do not have enough special education resource teachers in the classroom. And if anybody wants to see it, I hope the commissioners and anyone else that needs to, needs to see this and see what dire need these teachers are in. That's what I've been hearing, I've been to the high schools, I've been to the middle schools, but I am seeing a dire need for more special ed. In the last 20 years, our parents have changed. You know, we had mothers and fathers raising their children. Parents are not there anymore. Parents are deceased. Grandparents are raising children, and they are having difficult times trying to meet their needs. And then when on top of it, you have special ed requirements. We need to take more leadership, more ownership of this special ed area. And we definitely need to start right at the elementary. And they even said, though, at the town meeting, you know, if we're going to target something, let's start at elementary. I did take Mr. Anderson over to Shiloh and showed that wonderful way that they have it with one leader. That person does all the meetings, all the phone calls, does all the paperwork, and that allows the other teachers to teach. And I know that is not going to work for every school, I realize that. But we do need to help these special education teachers, so they can get back to teaching what they were hired to do, not to fill out a federal form. And I just hope that some of you also see that, and that we could beef up those numbers in special ed and put them up to the top. I mean, we've taken care of three other positions if we do fund balance, but I feel that we need to definitely move special education up top, because that's where we need it. We need to start everything at the elementary, and let's get that straightened out first.
I just, I just want to make sure folks know, this is not in any particular order. So there's no rhyme or reason to what I've presented here, so, okay.
But I want, for me, I want special education up top, because I see it all the time, that they really do need help in everything. And I know we are, if we do the fund balance with the other three, that's going to help with our mental health issues also. But I know we need more people on the ground in special ed helping out, so that our teachers can teach and somebody else can fill out a paper.
I agree. I absolutely agree.
And I think it was interesting, at that same town hall, we had guidance people there, bus drivers there, instructional assistants there, teachers there, administrators there. One of the things that a couple groups said, that piggyback onto what you're saying, is let's fix one area.
Right.
And then wait a year, wait a year.
Yes.
I'm skeptical, I like that, but I'm skeptical with the cuts we've had over so many years, can we afford, that means that some of this stuff's four or five years away, can we afford to wait that long?
I know.
Maybe we got to slap Band-Aids a couple places while we're doing that.
I understand.
Not that I disagree with you in any way.
No, and I understand what you're saying, Kenny, but they need, they need help.
Oh, I know, I agree.
It's absolutely horrible.
And I agree with starting at the elementary level, because if you start at the elementary level, as those students get older, they necessarily might not need the help later on, if you're targeting it early enough, so then you can continue to do what you need to do on the lower level to make things better.
And this makes a smooth foundation, because the parents are dealing with one person, they're making the phone calls, they have that contact all through elementary. And then I know at Shiloh Middle, they deal with Laura Hindley. And that is a clean program. You're not, you don't have to talk to this one, that one, and everybody else, one person's running that. And it really helps with the communication part, which is a big part of special education. So, so that's it.
Other input?
Honestly, I mean, we have made so many cuts over the, over the years in trying to stay in line with our budget, and, I mean, there's no doubt that we need, we need everything, we need it all. And again, I mean, I appreciate everything that's been said so far, because certainly I know what it's like trying to remain in compliance with special education. I mean, there's no way around that. You have to be in compliance. And then additionally, not only do you have to be in compliance with your paperwork, you have to be providing the service to the students. So it is, it's like a double-edged sword, and, you know, if one school has found a model that has worked for them with, you know, sort of divvying out the responsibilities, great for them, and maybe some other schools can certainly look at that. But again, as you said, I mean, that's not going to work for everyone.
And it's not, Dr. Dorsey.
Especially at the elementary level, parents really like to hear from the persons providing the service, you know, you're the one working with my child, so what are you seeing? You know, it's fine that somebody else is doing the paperwork, and again, as we said, that has to be done, but, you know, that contact has to be made with the person actually teaching and providing the service. So, you know, we need it all, and at that last community town hall meeting, well, I was a person who sat with bus contractors. So hearing their plea and hearing their situation also just raises a level of need, because again, hearing some of the bus drivers talk about providing pre-K transportation with no one on the bus other than the bus driver and these little four-year-olds who are on the bus for a while, you know, that's a challenge. So I know they need help as well, and I guess, John, you sent us some information recently, where we can see where our bus contractors fall in line with some of the other systems providing similar services. So we appreciate that. But again, I mean, like I said, I just feel that we need so much, and I am glad that at least we're looking at the fund balance to take care of some areas. I think we can get a bang for those bucks right away.
Absolutely.
Because certainly, the whole system can be impacted by a coordinator of health services. And honestly, I don't know how we've gotten by with just one person taking care of security for our entire system, so I think that's going to be a big bang for our system as well, plus for all the reasons that have been mentioned, the teacher specialist for substance abuse prevention. You know, I think back over the years, ever since we put academic specialists at schools, we've always had a rollout plan in place, where, you know, yes, we'll start with putting so many in, you know, fiscal year A or one, and then fiscal year two, we'll move on with some other schools, but, you know, we just even haven't been able to roll out those plans completely, because other situations have come to play. So again, now, as far as prioritizing, I think it's certainly going to take a hard look at this. I know that you've provided some information at the budget meetings, where we can actually see the costs associated with all of these, so all I can say is that we're going to have to look hard and, you know, certainly try to keep the, the best interest of everyone at heart here. And like I said, in a system that needs it all, I think it's going to certainly be a challenge as we move forward and prioritize.
I appreciate your comments, Dr. Dorsey, and you're right, we could make an argument for everything. We also recognize, you know, we have a finite amount of resources. And so our attempt in this whole process is to take a look at that and make sure we realize that, and that's why we're asking for the priorities, because we know we can't do it all at once. So as I build a budget for you to consider, I'd also like to build out, as we're building out, a sort of a five-year financial look, also a five-year sort of priority look, we recognize that that's not 100% foolproof, that conditions could change. We'll see what happens with legislation as it relates to Kerwin, that could certainly impact us in some ways. We did talk a little bit about the fact that we do recognize that most of that would be very restricted in terms of how it can be utilized. But as we think about what our needs are, as it relates to the plans that we've created, what we hear from our teachers, what we hear from our parents, what the data says are needs, I feel like we've identified the right things. Now it's just a matter of how do we prioritize that and see that out over the next several years.
The goal would be to get all of these items into the five-year plan, she's just a question of which ones go first.
And a couple of comments on that. I mean, I like the way that you're laying this out, Dr. Lockard, especially that we can say, okay, now that we, these are our growth assumptions, and that means we have this much left over to put towards strategic initiatives, and now we can, we can gear towards, okay, what, what strategic initiatives do we want, and how do we line those up against the funds that are available? But also the fact that I know that you're going through a zero-based budgeting exercise right now, right? Like we're trying to find efficiencies in the system, and anything that we find can also funnel through to the strategic initiatives piece.
Appreciate you mentioning that. In fact, Mr. Hartlove is helping each of our departments through that process. We're always looking to be as efficient as we can be, and that was one sort of initiative we took on, starting last summer, as we want to find those efficiencies, to support... we took on starting last summer, as we, we want to find those efficiencies to support our priorities.
And another comment that I wanted to make is, I want to make sure that we're not just thinking about the strategic initiatives in terms of positions, right? Because that's all that, that we've really been talking about. Okay, well, every one of the strategic initiatives is based in a position, right? Like, are there other things as well that we need to address? And I know we just came up with a technology strategy going forward. Are there things that we can either use as part of fund balance, or, or as part of the strategic initiatives to execute those things? So, I really liked the thoroughness and the, and the forward, long-term looking of that technology strategy, but in terms of, you know, doing the, the virtual programming that we were talking about, is there a way that we build that in? Because that, that's not really necessarily position-based, right? But they are dollars that need to be spent.
As you said, there would be some, ultimately, some positioning to support it, but there's also the, the infrastructure, the hardware, the software, if you will, the, those pieces.
I mean, yeah, I mean, John, you can probably speak best to this, but as far as the budget allocation over the past several years, for enhancements in technology, it's been pretty static, yeah?
It's, it's a deficit category. So, one, one major celebration we can have from the Kerwin blueprint money, not whatever Kerwin ultimately is, is it plug the deficit we, we had carried for years in special ed. The bad news is it filled a hole. It didn't allow us to do, to do more. But the other two areas of your budget that have been structurally underfunded, meaning at year-end, we have to make up those deficits, our technology and facilities, like facilities maintenance, not capital building projects, but repairing things short of major capital projects. And so, you know, to Jason's point, we need to, whether it's positions or not, we need to build in revenue to eventually build out a program, both, maybe some of that's capital revenue, and fund balance is a great way to get at that, and some of it'll have to be operational revenue.
I can say, though, going through the zero-based budgeting exercise and process and spending a significant amount of time on it, months now, it really has helped us refocus, not to, and to look at how we do business, and to use the strategic plan as, as the guide, as the lighthouse, if you will, that we're, we're working towards, and to really reprioritize where we're spending our, our time and our money to make sure that we are most efficient, because it's, it's a, it's a ton of work, but it's really helping us, I think, refocus on what's best for, for kids here in CCPS.
And I think, and you said earlier, and you just mentioned, fund balance may be a place to do some of the equipment for some of the stuff, because it's not a one-time cost, but it's a lot more one-time than ongoing. And, and again, I, this list is great, and it's tough to pick priorities. I mean, we sat here and had an evening where we talked about behavior issues in elementary school, and I'm like, wow, we need to do something there. We had the night where we talked about advanced academics and gifted in town, and we said, wow, we better do something there. You know? And, and yet, we're not really addressing that with any of this as the first priority, and, and like you said, you know, maybe, but it's almost depressing when you say, oh, we'll get to that in four or five years, but, so, it, it's a tough answer.
And I do realize, for 12 years ago, one, we, this Board of Education, they had cut and cut and cut and cut to bare, I mean, really, to bare bones. And it's hard for us to get out of this hole now and try to make up all, after all the cuts. And we are, we are not going to be able to do it overnight, but we need to do something.
Need to start chipping away at it.
Yeah, we need to, we start, we need to start now.
Right. Piggybacking on what Mr. Anderson was saying, is, is the, the advanced academics, actually, we were able to reprogram some current dollars.
That's right.
Into advanced academics. So, you're not seeing that here, but some of the dollars that were going towards other things are actually going towards.
That's correct. That's a really good point, Mr. Hartlove. So, so that was another benefit of the zero-based budgeting. Also, Ms. McCabe and I have been working on, and how we can work together to support the virtual learning programming as we move forward. So, it is, it's, it's actually enhancing and encouraging the ongoing cross-departmental collaboration that's taking place here in the school system.
Yeah, I, I really think that virtual learning is really going to help us. I know last year at Manchester Valley, they were having trouble with the, the one class, and that would have really helped us out with, with that. And, and, you know, it is an equity thing, so we definitely need to correct that for those two schools and all around the county.
And as we go through this budgeting process, I would love to see a list of those sort of things that you're determining, because those really are strategic plan initiatives, right? You're, you're finding those dollars within the existing budgets, and you're reallocating them, and that is really a strategic initiative, and I want to make sure that we're understanding all of those things that we're capturing by going through that exercise.
Chris? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, it sounds like there's some general agreement around the table that, so the academic specialists, the 11 at the elementary level and seven at the middle school level, it sounds like those are secondary at this point.
Correct.
That folks are thinking, I guess, on this particular slide, it's really the bottom five categories is where we've been kind of focusing as the immediate need, because those, I guess, are things that we're, we're saying will stem the bleed, right? Those are sort of the most immediate needs, right?
But we'll probably need the technicians if we're ramping up on that stuff, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, can we bump up one more line?
You will need it onsite because of your, starting up that virtual learning system.
Yeah.
It's not just virtual learning, it's, as we increase technology in all of our schools with laptops, et cetera, we'll need more technicians.
Yes, I understand.
Well, the one thing about that, I, I don't think anybody's disputing that we would really like to have the academic specialists.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that we're saying that the other needs are, are more pressing. But I'd also like to think about, kind of akin to the, the work sessions that we had a couple of years ago now on middle school ELA, right, where we had recognized in the, in the park results that we had an issue with middle school ELA, and once some folks really dug down into that, and they, they found, you know, well, it was the writing component, and then we started focusing on the TDCRs, and that really seemed to help a lot, that it, it seems like, you know, our park results aren't, or, you know, our, test scores and our academic achievement aren't where we want them to be, certainly at the elementary level. Is there some sort of exercise like that, like a focused resource, to get in, short of doing, you know, 18 academic specialists, is there a way to?
Interventions.
Yeah, so, so Ms. McCabe and I have been, since the day we started together in July 1, we've been talking about the need to really look at our type of intervention process that we have in place here, whether, you know, and we spoke a little bit at the delegation meeting about this, and the state is now moving also to making sure that we're screening our students at kindergarten, making sure that we're providing adequate intervention, whether that be evidence-based or research-based types of interventions, and then really looking at the efficacy of the actual instructional program to make sure that students are growing. And so, since that, since we've started that work, there's a collaboration taking place between our special education department, as well as our reading department, as well as our accountability office now, to go ahead and look at what it is that we're doing presently all around the county, really looking at our IST process, essentially a collaborative process at buildings, looking at what kind of data do we have available, which can be found now in our dashboard, to look at what kind of growth is taking place in which areas so we can identify which schools are having the most success, and then look at their model, steal shamelessly, put other models in other buildings, and then start to use potential resources in the future to go ahead and continue to emulate the models that are working. And that is a true RTI model, which is where we're trying to get to, the idea that we can exhaust interventions prior to even going to qualification for special education. Not that we're over, over identifying, that's not what I'm saying, but what I am saying is that, as we all work together and have such positions as our specialists, to be able to provide a consistent, evidence-based instructional program, then we will naturally begin to see overall academic achievement increase, but potentially, we also could be meeting the needs of students without going to an identification process, potentially. So, that, those positions would have huge impact on how we do business also.
The other thing that we've been doing with elementary ELA is analyzing not only the data in our park results, but the data that comes in, in our countywide benchmarks assessments. And one of the things that we've been able to identify, just like middle school, is writing at the elementary level. And when you look at our scores, a lot of where the students struggle is in putting their thoughts in writing when it comes to comprehension. And so, that has been a big focus for us starting this school year, so we're hoping that that will have an impact on our results as well.
I definitely advocate heavily for stealing shamelessly from the, the schools that, that are doing well, right? Like, so if we really start looking at which schools are doing the best, and how do we leverage that into other schools, I'm really glad to hear all of that, so.
Okay, Chris, do you mind taking us to the last slide? We'll wrap it up here.
Sure.
The, just want to, we've sort of said these, I want to reiterate, December 12th, we will, our draft, and that's the numbers that we looked at. We'll share that draft plan with our Board of County Commissioners. We're reaching out to Roberta to get that agenda set, and hope to have that in the next bit here, and get that to folks ahead of time. Then in January, I'll be coming with a superintendent's proposed budget on the 8th of January. If you know, then in February, the board will adopt their FY '21 operating budget. And then, fast forward, all the way to May, it seems like a long time away, but in the blink of an eye, it'll be here when we finally adopt our, approve our final operating budget. So, just trying to do this incrementally, thoughtfully, with a lot of input along the way, and there's, you know, at every, at every place here, there's still opportunity to tweak, adjust, make recommendations moving forward.
And so, Commissioner Weaver, we're definitely planning to share this at the, the joint meeting in December, and, once again, we'd like to thank the commissioners for leveling us, that, levelizing that, that growth rate so that we could actually put together a plan like this, and, and how do you think this will be received from the commissioners?
Well, I'm going to let them know a little ahead of time what we're anticipating. No surprises. However, this plan, I think, is exactly what you have to have. You're on the right track, looking at the money for six years. Now, I did learn one thing from Ted, since he's standing back here, he's one, you know...
And Ted's sitting there just thinking, one thing? Only one?
Much more than that, but the one thing I did learn from Ted is, you know, the first, second year, we're pretty, going to be pretty accurate on this, the time we get out five years, it's a lot more guesswork, and we're going to be changing it as we go, but at least we have a plan, and, you know, if you aim for the moon and even miss, you wind up with a star, so we're going to wind up, I think, in the right track here in the future. And I know where you need, have needs, I hear from it all the time, and I think you are addressing a lot of those. And, you know, start at the elementary level, build a good foundation, the rest of it comes easy, and I, I give you a lot of credit for taking time, putting this together, working with the commissioners, and if people haven't noticed, we're having a lot of good communication in this county between the Sheriff's Department, the Health Department, as you alluded to, the commissioners, the Board of Ed. Things are working the way I think they should be working, and, thank you.
And not every county does that.
No, they don't. I had my eyes opened, and here again, I'm going to go back to Ted. The first time Rand got elected, went to Mako, he gave a presentation, and people from the other counties were, wow, they plan their budget for five years in advance? That's unheard of. Well, I'll give Ted credit on that. In fact, I think he probably been hired by a dozen other counties that day, but we were able to keep him, so, I, I think I heard it firsthand, and some of the counties, they don't even talk to the Board of Ed. There's no communication back and forth. So, I think we have a, a model here in Carroll County, and we're developing that, I think, to the utmost at present time, so, thank you.
And I guess, just as, we do need to request, you know, how we would use fund balance, right, from the, the commissioners, so, do you think that the three positions that we're talking about over the next three years, is that something, I mean, those are in categories that I think are near and dear to the commissioners' hearts, do you think that that's something that they would support? I mean, obviously, you'd need to go and talk to them about it, but your gut feel is that this, this is kind of in alignment with what the commissioners are trying to accomplish as well?
I would hope, yeah.
Good.
All right. Board members, any other items that we'd like to add to the prioritization list, or any other discussions that we'd like to have?
Good presentation.
This is a great first draft, and really appreciate all the effort going into this.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
That we will be going back into.